Good evening, everyone. With the time being 6:00 PM on Tuesday, June 13, 2023, I will call this meeting of the Webster School Committee to order and ask that we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As a reminder, this meeting is being recorded, both video and audio, and will be posted on the district website. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the May 23, 2023 meeting. Is there any discussion around those minutes? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve them.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Laurie, would you please pull the committee?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes. And the next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report. Good evening, Mrs. Prangeli.
Good evening. Thank you. I hope everybody's had a great week as we get towards the end of the school year. It is quickly approaching us. I wanted to take a few minutes tonight to recognize some of our retirees. As you know, we have our last day of school next week, and for some of them, they're going to mark this the end of their teaching or educational career here in Webster. And so I'd just like to take a few minutes to recognize them, tell you a little bit about them, maybe have somebody speak, and we'll go through. I have actually three retirees this year. Mr. Nebulon, James Nebulon, was supposed to be here tonight. He's from the high school, math teacher. Unfortunately, he is ill today, so he couldn't be here. He sends his apologies. But James has been a teacher here for 16 years. He was hired in March of 2007 as a substitute, and he started the year, the school year in 2007/08 year as a paraprofessional, and then in November became a math teacher and has been serving as a teacher ever since. Mr. Nebulon was a mentor and a curriculum leader for many years here in the district. He was critical to the success and implementation of our CPM program years ago as a content leader at the high school. He spent hours and hours getting trained here with his team. On Saturday, he would go to classrooms and serve as a co-teacher in training to make sure they felt comfortable with the program. He gave up his preps. He was here tirelessly after school. He has done so much to serve our students here in Webster, and I just wanted to wish him congratulations in his retirement. I know he will be missed. He has built a lot of relationships along the way, so I'm sad to see him go, but I wish him nothing but best in his retirement. So we'll miss him. The next we have here is Lorraine Gramatikakis. Hi, Lorraine. I'll give a little bit, but then I'm going to ask Ellen to come up and talk about Lorraine a little bit. Let's see if I have my dates right anyways. Lorraine worked in the summer school program at Bartlett High School. Is that right? In 1998. And then she worked some as MCAS summer tutor over the years. You have spent 23 years here in Webster. I'm not going to say everything. Ellen, why don't you come up and share what you have, so that way we're not repeating the same thing. But Lorraine has spent a lot of time working, even at the old A.J. Siedkowsky School here in Webster, over time.
Actually, it was. It was 23 years that I had counted as well. She's been teaching here in Webster for 23 years, but I really didn't get to know her until we merged Park Ave with the middle school, third and fourth grade, about eight years ago. Most of the time, she has spent teaching fourth grade at the middle school, but with the new configuration of grades, she was given the opportunity to move into second grade. I thought she was very brave, because in my time in the classroom, it was spent entirely in second grade. So to take on the new challenge of moving down two grades, I thought, wow. But Lorraine took on the challenge and learning everything that she could about her new grade level curriculum. I spent time in her classroom that first year with our classroom assistants for a period. It was one period a day that I would go in and help out with reading and small groups and things like that. And it was then that I got to know what kind of a caring person she was. Caring teacher, the type that gets to know the whole child. They weren't just kids in her room. She got to know their hobbies, their likes, their dislikes, their interests. I remember she had them writing autobiographies, which is also, for second graders, very challenging. And she actually put it out there to the other teachers in the school to have a couple of the kiddos go read in their classrooms, read their autobiographies to them. It was, I thought that was very brave, and I thought she did a great job with that. English and language arts were really Lorraine's specialties. But after a few years, she realized that she kind of missed her roots of that fourth grade, and so she moved on up back to fourth grade the past couple of years. I think it's been about three years that she's been up in fourth grade and doing an excellent job up there. She's the first one to congratulate people when we announce something in, you know, either just at our building or across the district, to congratulate people on doing this, that, or the other thing. She's really a caring person, and she's a great singer, too. I found out this, just this past year, that she's in the choir at my church. It's been a pleasure getting to know Lorraine over the past eight years. She's kind-hearted, knowledgeable, and just a great person. I wish her the best of luck in her future, but I'll miss her smiling face. Thank you.
That was so sweet.
You can. I have a little gift for you also.
I want to thank everybody. I want to tell the school. Come on up. So I just want to thank all the people I've worked with in the past. I've gone through a lot between schools, traveling through different, you know, three different schools, and many principals, many assistant principals, many of this and that, bringing this kind of English and this kind of math, and then get rid of it, get in something else. So I've been through up and down and around. Linda Millet, I worked with Linda Millet back at A.J. Ellen, yes, become some good friends, and I really appreciate the thoughtful comments you made of me and my smiley face. Yes, I try to always smile no matter what. So I just want to say thank you for everything, and I appreciate the time I had with our children, and she hit it on the spot when I said I care for the whole person. It's very hard for me to, you know, because I always see the children as an adult, one day. I'm not making, I'm not helping a fourth grader. I'm helping someone who's going to be in society one day. So, thank you.
Allegiance. You will be missed.
Thank you so much.
We appreciate everything you've done for us.
And I love plants, so thank you.
And don't go yet.
Thank you for this beautiful plant. Thank you, everybody.
On behalf of the Webster School Committee, I just would like to thank you for your many years of dedicated service to the students and the school community as a whole. Congratulations on your retirement.
All right. Next up on the list, this one's a little close to home for me. This is Cheryl Spink. Cheryl has worked in the Webster School Department since 1997. Cheryl was actually hired as a graphics art secretary back in the day. Unfortunately, over the years, and not unfortunate for me, fortunately for me, when the graphics art department got cut, Cheryl was in the position where her job was being eliminated, and she went over to the school year clerk in the high school and adapted in the school year clerk role, learned all the new programming, and was willing to pitch in and jump in wherever she was needed. There was a time in the business office where we were short-staffed. I had asked Cheryl for some help because she had some, working some extra time, seeing her hours were reduced, and she was coming over to the business office, helping and supporting us with some payroll when she could over the years. Back in 2018, when I became the business manager, Cheryl applied and became my assistant over in the office. She was there before then when Linda Dixon retired, so I don't know how many years total in the business office you've had, probably like 10, if not more than 10, quite a few years. But she has just been somebody I have counted on now for a long time, pitching in and learning and adapting and being open to change in different things. I can't tell you how much I appreciate her support over the years. It's meant the world to me. I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for her, so I'm going to miss her. I'm not going to get emotional, but I just want to thank you. I think people sometimes forget about people in the business office and think that they're in the business office, they don't have an impact on the students. But everybody here in Webster has an impact in some way, shape, or form on the students and the community here in Webster, whether it's business office, crossing guard. Some of the best relationships I've made this past year was on the corner as a crossing guard, meeting and talking with kids as they're crossing the streets, getting to know the ones waiting for their brothers, learning who's walking in and out. And we have those conversations. We talk to the kids and we wave to them through the windows coming through. But even in our roles in business or no matter what, we're always trying to look at the lens of how can we support the students? How can we support the teachers in their needs? How can we support the administration? And are we being responsible? Are we supporting the community in the way we're using the funds? So all of that comes back to our students, no matter what role you're in, whether it's a business office, special education secretary, in some way, they have an impact on what happens to students. So I just, from the bottom of my heart, I thank you for everything you've done for our students and our community, and I know I'm going to miss you like crazy, but we'll be in touch. I know that for sure. And I know you're retiring, but she's actually going to continue working, not here, but she's probably going to be busier at home. But thank you so much for, Cheryl, for all you have done, and I'm going to have a little something to say. Want to give a speech, Cheryl? I know you love others.
I don't. Well, I wasn't prepared to say anything. Thank you, mom. But I would like to, I suppose I have to sit down? Yeah. I would like to say I have enjoyed all my 25 years here. It's been quite a variety of things, and I loved being in the graphics room, but I loved being in the business office. But 25 years has flown by, and I do thank the Webster Public Schools for all that time. But I'm not much of a talker, so it's sort of sweet.
And I'm doing something a little additional this year, which I hope, well, I hope, it is something that's going to happen for years to come. I thought of how can we recognize our staff year to year and have them be remembered in the buildings? I always see, often at many community events, I hear parents coming, talking about teachers they've had or they've had in the past, or they're at different buildings. So this year, what I've done is I purchased plaques for our staff, and it says, that'll hang in the building. So it says, "In recognition of Webster Public Schools retirees." And your names are on the plaques, and we've got four of the same plaques, so one's going to be hung in every building in the entryway with the same information on it, has your names on there, and that'll be something that we will continue to happen as years come. Retirees will be added to the list, so it's a way that we can recognize our Webster Public School employees.
That's really special. Thank you for that.
So thank you. Thank you very much. There's 65 years of experience retiring here tonight. So, thank you. Can I get a picture up with you guys? Yeah, thank you.
Dr. Mackay, did you have something you wanted to say?
I did. I just wanted to thank Cheryl because being new to the central office and being in the role of the grants, it was a huge learning curve for me to manage all of that, and I'm sure that as she saw me walking across the office, like heading toward her office, she must have been like, here she comes again. And. Yeah, see? See? She didn't deny it. I know. I take it with love. But you've been a real source of support and mentoring for me, really, in the books and any question related to money, and it's been, I'm going to miss you as well. I learned a lot. Thank you so much.
Ms. Barris?
Cheryl, you know that I am going to miss every time you come into my office to chase down the people who do not fill out those random overtime studies.
It's kind of an ongoing little joke between us, but I just want to say in all seriousness, Cheryl is one of the most professional, valued people, I think, in our office, and we've worked for a lot of years together now. And it's really, it's bittersweet. I know that you're going to enjoy what your next journey is, but, you know, we are definitely going to miss you, especially in the special ed department. You do a lot to support us, and we, I know that we will be left in good hands, but it is, you know, it is very bittersweet for all of us. So, but thank you.
But I will not.
No.
And once again, on behalf of the Webster School Committee, I want to thank you for your many years of service. I'll miss seeing your face when I step in, too.
Hit the button. Thank you. Sad to see 65 years, but good for them in their retirement. I wish them nothing the best. Second item I have for you is a personnel update. I have a few changes. Samantha Bodett transferred to a math coach, which is a new position at Bartlett High School. Michelle Bigelow transferred to the project lead the way coordinator, teacher, new position at Bartlett High School. Art Duquette is transferred to the project lead the way teacher. He is replacing Ms. Bigelow, who moved. And then Kim Terault is transferred to STEAM, who was replacing a retiree at Park Ave Elementary. That's it for personnel. Next item I have is an instructional leadership update. On June 2, the leadership team, along with our coaches, met with our state partners, SaaS, to work on our district prioritization. They facilitated the meeting for us. We looked at three grade levels of data as a team and talked through the data and processed, and we are looking at really what our long-term instructional priority is going to be and really narrowing down our, trying to simplify our focus on where we will be with our instructional priority next year, one of our instructional priorities. We put a big focus coming down on our ELL population and the special needs population is where we think a lot of our targeted work needs to happen. So we will continue working on this prioritization at our DLT, our next DLT meeting on June 26, and we continue to really get in and focus on our priority, 27th, sorry, as we really narrow down the focus of our priority as we head into next school year. I don't know, did you want to add anything that you think I missed on the prioritization? I think it went really well.
The only thing is that this is an activity that we're engaged in, to choose something to really put our efforts into and get, like, instead of thinking about this instructional priority from many, 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 many angles, to really get focused on doing some work. And some might think, like, that's the only thing we're going to work on. Well, schools can't just work on one thing. So it's where our focus is going to be, but we still have to, we still have to make sure to do all of the other work. But then we can center our professional development, we can center our coaching, we can center our, when we meet with teachers, all of that can be centered around this instructional focus.
Thank you. Yep. And it was interesting to see as we, you know, a lot of our work is already focused around improving our ELL and special ed populations, and as you narrow down the data and look at the attendance and where your targets need to hit, it just really clarified the work that needs to happen here. And so we will continue that and bring the information back as we narrow down that focus. The next item I wanted to talk about was pocket talk. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Mackay in a minute. We have, the district purchased a small amount of translation devices as we're saying the work that we've been doing on our ELL program. Do you want to talk about the pocket talk?
Sure. Thank you. The initial reason we brought this forth is the L teachers asked me if we could get devices that, in particular newcomers, could walk around with so that they're, they're able to, whether it's a tablet, an iPad, or some kind of device, that they're able to engage with their classroom content more so than what they're able to do now. So we invested in about 20 or 25, and we, because of the timing at the end of the year, instead of putting them into the hands of the students, we wanted to test them out. So we put them into the hands of key players, like all the nurses, stations have them, all of the, like, every office has one or two. We want counselors to have them. We want the family liaisons to have them, and they've been trying it out. One of the nurses, we received a new family recently from India with three students. One of the, one of the schools has used it tremendously, used it a lot, speaking, being able to communicate with the family who speaks Gujarati. And so nothing, it's not a language that we've dealt with a lot, and so it was tremendous to be able to communicate with this family and do what, you know, do what we need to be doing. Our, I'm gathering, we're gathering information from the people that have been using it, and so far, the feedback has been positive and taking advantage of some of the funds that we currently have with ESAR and thinking about the ways to engage with our families and our students that we want to expand and purchase additional items. And so we thought that we could just demonstrate for you how it works. So the, let's see. Okay. So it's like a phone, the size of a phone, but it doesn't work like a phone, because right now, I think, you know, it's kind of a mixed message to say, put your phones away, but students that need to translate, take your phones out and translate with them. So this takes away that mixed messaging. So the example that I have here is there, it's Portuguese to English, so our biggest growing population of Ls and other language is Portuguese. Many Brazilian families are moving to the area. This is happening across Massachusetts. This is happening across the country. Many of our resources already have Spanish capacity, although not perfect. We have way more resources available in Spanish than we do in Portuguese. So having this technology will be helpful. So if I was a Portuguese-speaking family member and I wanted to, I'm going to say, I'd like to enroll my child in school. So I'll say it in Portuguese, and you'll hear what it sounds like in English. So family speaking to the school. Eu quero entrar na escola. I want to go to school. So I'm saying, I think I said something like, I want to go to school. So instead of saying, I'd like to register for school. And so now everybody can hear it, and it's like, it's clear. It's not like, oh, let's figure out what it's trying to say and if Google made any mistakes. If we say it in English to Portuguese, so we could say, please come to school to speak with a teacher. So it's pretty simple to use. We can program the languages. There are over 70 languages that we can utilize, and there's some data that we can collect as to what languages, the frequency, so that we can track over time how useful it is and how much we can, how much this can potentially help us engage with our families and our students. So that's pocket talk.
It's been, you okay in there? It's actually been, we've heard from a few staff now that it's been very helpful, especially for those newcomers who don't have any English in the classroom, so the teacher's not standing there, not knowing how to help the student. They can communicate with the student. So we're looking on potentially expanding that, and it would be helpful if we could, you know, be nice down the road, if maybe every teacher would have one. But at least every teacher who has an L or, you know, will be able to have one to be able to support the students. So I think that was a good find and a good purchase, and we look forward to moving forward with that. I'm also going to take advantage of Ms. Mackay while she's here, and we have, she brought to my attention earlier this year, probably in March, the SEAL of Bilinguality. It was a program that she was looking to participate in for this year. Unfortunately, because of the timing and the lateness of the year, we couldn't participate, but the school district is looking to participate in that for next year. So do you want to talk a little bit about that also?
The SEAL of Bilinguality is something that many districts are engaged in across the state so far, and we'd like to jump on board. The Massachusetts State SEAL of Bilinguality is an official designation that provides recognition of students who demonstrate proficiency in English and at least one other language. The LOOK Act requires students to demonstrate their proficiency in English by means of the Grade 10 English Language Arts, MCAS. The regulations describe that the purpose of the state SEAL of Bilinguality are to encourage students to study and master languages, certify attainment of bilingual skills, recognize the value of language diversity, and thinking for college and career readiness, provide employers with a method of identifying people with language and bilingual skills, provide universities with a method of, to recognize and give credit to applicants for the attainment of high-level skills and languages, prepare students with skills that will benefit them in the labor market and the global society, and to strengthen the intergroup communication and honor the multiple cultures and languages in a community. Students who earn a state SEAL of Bilinguality demonstrate the English and world language skills that are often necessary to succeed in multilingual post-secondary academic and professional settings. The state SEAL of Bilinguality affirms the identity of multilingual and multicultural students' backgrounds throughout the Commonwealth. The state SEAL of Bilinguality indicates to students and their families that their language, languages, and culture, cultures, are valued in Massachusetts. This program affirms that all students and all languages are valid and valuable. Students of all language backgrounds, including English learners, former English learners, heritage speakers, signers of world languages, and students from monolingual English-speaking homes who have acquired world languages at school or in the community are eligible for the state SEAL of Bilinguality and the state SEAL of Bilinguality with distinction. The state SEAL of Bilinguality and the state SEAL of Bilinguality with distinction recognize all dialects of world languages and do not elevate any one expression of a world language over another. The state SEAL of Bilinguality thus supports academic achievement for all, providing representation for all students of all languages and cultures, and recognizing students for the essential multilingual skills that they possess. So the steps that we have to take is we have to register. I'm not going to go through all of the steps. I shared with Superintendent Prangeli the Massachusetts guidance on the state SEAL of Bilinguality so that if you're interested, we can forward it to you. But basically, at the district level, we have to enroll in the state SEAL of Bilinguality program with, in the security portal. There are some webinars that we have to take. So the team that we've assembled so far includes myself, the L teachers, and the world languages department head and guidance. And we tried to do it this year, but the, one of the regulations, you can't do it unless you get the information out to all families. So at the time, they were like, we have some students that are graduating and we could get them, but if we can't provide the information to all families of students who could be eligible, then we're not able to do it. So we're going to endeavor in this next year. So this benefits students who are English speakers, who achieve a certain level of literacy in, like, their world language class. in, like, their world language class. There are, you know, students that move to us that speak a heritage language, and we can purchase tests that they can take. So if they can take, like, the AP Spanish test, that's one thing. But if they come from another country that we don't teach the language, the only language we teach is Spanish, that we can purchase tests, and they can assess in those, and they can get bilinguality in that language. So there are multiple venues for our students to get there. And then the fact that it becomes a seal on their diploma, there's something special about that. And I think the value that it places on the asset of bilinguality and biculturalism and the, you know, focus on speaking a different language, whether you're learning a new language as an English speaker, or you're maintaining a language that you've come to us with, is an asset, it's not a deficit. And so, I think that this is a good step in the right direction for us.
Absolutely. I think it's great, and it's a great way to recognize our students. So I think it's wonderful.
Great. Thank you for those updates.
Any questions on that? Oh, sure.
I don't want to take this away from Amy if you're talking about the L breakfast. Okay. So, on Thursday and Friday last week, we... The team at Park Avenue held a recognition breakfast for students who received their access scores and their families received the access scores. And so, combined students and families, we saw 234 people at the breakfast Thursday and Friday, which was great. And what I enjoyed seeing the most was families had questions that the L teachers, the administrators, other teachers were just going around to tables, and if they had a question about, like, "What does this mean?", they could ask us immediately. And that's way different than receiving, you know, a packet of papers in the mail that, "Here are your access scores from the previous year." So, kudos to Park Ave and the team for putting that on.
Thank you. That was a really nice event. I was there, and it was great to see all the parents. And I was one of the people they were asking the questions, so I had to run to Ms. Mackay for help because I couldn't help. But it was wonderful to see everybody there, so, thank you. And other updates, I'm going to lump some of this together. This is just an outline of everything that is happening, has been happening. We have had a field day ongoing at Park Ave. I know, I'm sure, you're going to talk about that. We've had museum night at the Webster Middle School. They did a senior overnight here for our seniors on Friday. We had the grads on parade on June 8th. There was an art show at the middle school on June 8th. It has just been so active in the district. There are so many things going on here on a daily basis, wonderful events. And I just really want to acknowledge those events and acknowledge the time of the staff and the principals and the administration, the teachers, the volunteers. It's just incredible, the people that have been coming out and supporting our families and the students of all the great things that are happening here, and it's nice to see their work on display. I really thoroughly enjoyed the museum night, that was a great idea. And then, you know, Park Ave, we had the L breakfast, we have girls on the run. There's just so many things going on on a daily basis, and there's a lot of effort that goes into it, and I don't think they get the recognition that is deserved for the amount of time that is being put in by all of you and your team. So, thank you very much for that. And I just... There's still more to come. School's not over yet, so it's still busy. But a lot of good things are happening here every day, and I just wanted to give a shout out for that. I also wanted to let you know that our adult education program is actually holding a graduation for their students. So that's going to be going here, June 15th, at 6:00 PM. And I did want to recognize our graduation this past Friday at Indian Ranch. I think it was nice, the rain held off, thank goodness, and a rainbow just in time for the opening of graduation, I think, for our first year there. It was very nice. I know next year, we're not going to have an option here. So, all the feedback that I've heard has been very good. I haven't heard any real negatives, I mean, some minor tweaks that we can make, but nothing crazy. So I'm sure the team, the graduation team, will get back together and talk about that. But I just wanted to congratulate all the students that graduated. It was a beautiful event. And thank you for everybody who put their time and effort into making that evening a success. I just think it was a wonderful way to spend a Friday night, so, thank you. And that concludes my report, or my superintendent report, that is.
Thank you for those updates, Mrs. Prangeli. Any questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none. The next item is the business manager report.
Thank you. First item I have for you is a building committee update. We have an upcoming building committee meeting next week on June 20th. We have been holding meetings. We held meetings here all day Monday and Tuesday. The meeting focused on FFNE for classrooms, what classrooms are going to look like. We also had meetings about special education spaces. That Ms. Barris was there. We went over and met with the preschool, really refining what the places are going to look like and how we're going to utilize them. We talked about flow of pickup from preschool, because it's going to be a new location over here. What is that going to look like? How are we going to pick students up and drop them off? How do the preschool teachers see the flow? How is it working now at Park Ave? How can we bring that over to the high school? So, there's lots going on. It's really becoming an active project now. We are talking multiple times a week with our OPMs and our architects, which is great. Last week, we had a staff meeting at the high school to discuss the moves. We have been having ongoing communications for those who are moving out to the modulars. We're finalizing... We finalized those plans with the classrooms, informed the teachers of where they're going to be moving to. Others are going to be moving rooms, because as you know, C-section is going to be offline first. So, our goal is to start the school year in the mods as a regular routine going on, so we don't have to make any mid-year moves. The project is not actually going out to bid till September. So you're not going to see construction probably start happening until November, other than the modulars. But we're not going to be putting anybody, starting at a regular year here in the classrooms, and then having to move everybody out to the modulars. It doesn't make sense. So we need to take advantage of our summer months, get everything in place. Modulars will be... The mobilization of those start next week, on June 19th. The modular company is going to be on site. They're going to be removing some trees out front. They are now going to be housing as mods are being delivered. They're going to be holding them at the Webster Lake for us. Our town partners have been very helpful with allowing us to store them there. And then when they're ready to be moved over, they'll be moved here to the site. But all the site work you'll start to see happening next week, starting Monday, teachers will be parking. We've asked them to park in the other parking lots, either where the old student parking lot is or on the side for the last week of school. As they get that area ready, they'll be putting up fencing and getting it ready for the mods to come in. So it is real, it's happening. It's exciting and terrifying at the same time, because there's a lot of moving pieces. So you're always trying to stay one step ahead, trying to keep safety in mind, trying to keep, you know, cover all your bases, and things are constantly moving. You know, what's the best flow? We thought we had an admin office in one spot, but then we figure out the flow is going to be better. So now, we're moving that to the end of the building, and we might be using this end as an entrance for admin pickups during the day. If a parent comes to pick up where they're going, the office is going to be offline over there. So, different locations. And we'll do our best to communicate all of that to parents as they come in. Our hope is that, you know, we'll be sending out communications over the summer, making sure that there's clear, and maybe even doing an informational night or something down the road to make sure we're communicating any changes that are being made. But if we start the year off with those changes, I think it's going to be less confusing than having to change two or three months into the school year. So, lots going on there. Can I answer any questions about the project, or anything that you have concerns?
Through the chair. Ms. Millen? Is there a plan? Kind of a protection plan when they're... As long as they're off-site down at... By the lake?
Yeah. They have them watched, and it's fenced in at night. So they're going to be there for a very short period of time. The concern was that they did not want to delay the delivery. It's kind of when they're ready, they want to send them out. They don't want to hold them. And with the supply chain and the way things are, they didn't want to cause any delays in getting them. So they just said, "As soon as they're ready, they're shipping them out." But we've talked to the police department, we've talked to the town and the recreation. They do take loops down there, they felt the area was secure, they felt the module company was very comfortable with the area. And they do lock the gates at night. So, hopefully, things...
Sounds good. It's just, there's a lot of traffic there.
Yep.
At this time of the year.
Absolutely.
A lot of people coming and going.
Absolutely. We're definitely aware of that. So, and it's, like I said, it's going to be a short term. They're not going to be there for any length of time.
Thank you.
Sure. Any other questions?
Questions?
All right. Thank you. Next item I have is maintenance update. Once again, at the Webster Middle School, we are experiencing issues with our bathrooms. We continue to call the company in and help clear it out and try and keep things moving to get us through to the end of the year. There are some real concerns that we are going to have to dig up the middle school hallway. We have a feeling that's where we're being told they believe the problem is. So, until we can actually get out of school and get somebody really in there and do some serious testing, we'll have a better idea. But hopefully, we don't have to go through the hallway and the issues underneath in the floor. That's where they believe it is. But we'll get more clarification as soon as school's out. We're going to have to get somebody working on that right away to get it fixed over the summer before the school year starts. So, it's... What we've done to date is not going to fix the problem. Bartlett, we are in good shape. At Park Ave, we are in good shape. We are still waiting to hear from the vendors. We have been working with a company to try and come in and add some partitions to the walls in the library and maybe in the entryway upstairs to add some additional spaces for services for students and stuff. Those little pocket areas that are in the library that, to the right, closing those in and making like three or four little rooms where staff could maybe service students in the library. So we're working with that. And those would be sliding walls. So you could leave them open, and then you could use them as rooms. So we're getting pricing on that, and we'll be having meetings with that. But everything else is in good shape. And at the district level here in the district offices, we have been in good shape. So I have no other maintenance things to report right now. Are there any questions about maintenance? No? Okay. And other updates, we are still looking. We still have the business manager position posted. I do have received two applications, and we did repost the position again on school springs. I am hoping to set up a couple of interviews next week. I got to get the team together and coordinate a date and see if we can get a couple of interviews going for that. And that's all I have right now on items for me. If, Ms., there's any questions?
Any questions or comments from the committee?
Thank you.
Any updates, Mrs. Prangeli? The next item on the agenda is the principal report. Joining us this evening is Ms. Polyafico from Park Ave Elementary. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. As I was getting ready to talk about our celebrations and events, you guys saw the list last time I was here of all the things, and we've only added to that since. So, it has grown, maybe even doubled. But I was really thinking about a huge thank you to the faculty, staff, our PTO, our families, for our end-of-year events and celebrations, and really, all year. From the school staff and PTO, planning and organizing the events and attending them, custodial staff setting up for them, bus drivers and cafeteria, getting the kids there, providing food for all of our events, front office staff scheduling. They've really done a fantastic job, really gone above and beyond to make sure our students feel celebrated at Park Ave. So, all of these things that I am going to kind of go over right now for our celebrations and events would not be possible without the hard work and dedication of all of the staff, from, you know, front office to back office, so. So we've had concerts at each grade, really happening throughout. I think we started in April and been going throughout. We have our last one this week for grade four. They've been outside, really well attended by families. So if you drive by Park Ave on those days, all the students out there in their rainbow shirts and families with their lawn chairs just set up out on the peaceful playground for those events. They've been fantastic. We had a visit from Mr. Ty, the children's librarian, who came to talk to all the grade levels about summer reading rewards programs and working with us as well to make sure they have our summer reading information at the library. And they have some great rewards programs for the students to do summer reading. We welcomed the Webster Fire Department. They did a grade-three fire safety series. They came in three different times to meet with grade three to talk about many different fire and water safety. We had field days, as Superintendent Prangeli mentioned, put on by the Unified Arts. Those were running for a week. We got really lucky, because we got that one week of fantastic weather for those. Everybody who had a free moment was up there volunteering. We had parent volunteers. And a much-loved visit each day from the Webster Fire Department, who came and blew their fire hoses over the kids, and they were just... Yeah, they were thrilled to see kids out there dancing and the, you know, it's kind of the sun and the rainbows. A little cheesy, but it was really awesome to see how happy those kids were to get rained on by fire hoses. We had the Me and Someone Special Dance. The PTO put that on two different sessions, and they were fully booked. Mrs. Peats, our phys ed teacher, was Mrs. Peats laying down the beat DJ. It was really fantastic. I was able to come with my son, and it was a great event. Counselors put on a bikes and boards program for students to come, learn about bike safety, get some helmets for bikes, skateboards, scooters. Families brought their bikes with them, and they had a little parade. So we're able to really learn about being safe over the summer with... As they're out enjoying the weather. As was mentioned, our ELL breakfast was fantastic. We had two separate sessions of that too, because they were so large, so that was great. Virtual field trip. So, our dean, Mr. Aronian, set up through the Blackstone Valley Education Hub. They came in with virtual headsets. We did half of the third grade already, and the rest of the third grade will be this week. Virtual headsets, where they can program them to go lots of different things, whether it's the ocean floor, Mars, space, the jungle, all kinds of... They're really cool. So, one person programs those. So, those are through the Blackstone Valley Hub, which is part of the Blackstone Valley Commerce. We did have Girls on the Run again for spring. That was at Polar Park. We had over 25 students, four coaches and volunteers, and a volunteer mini-coach that helped out. So, I was not able to attend this time around, but always a fantastic event. And our welcoming the high school grads on parade was fantastic. If anybody was able to be there for it, it was through the roof. So not only did the kids... Did the graduates parade through the hallways, but then all of the school came out and stood around the half-circle, and the buses and ambulance, and I'm getting goosebumps just thinking about it. And the police department circled around and then switched directions and circled the other way. And if you... I'd say if you live anywhere in a 10-mile radius of Park Ave, you could hear that event happening. It was loud. So yeah, just that excitement, and to be able to say to our kids, like, "That'll be you one day, that'll be you one day," is fantastic. Upcoming, we have grade-four move-up day to the middle school tomorrow. So grade four will be heading over to visit the teachers, learn about the middle school, see the space. Grade-four concert will be on Thursday, and that will be followed by a small promotion ceremony. So we will be celebrating our students moving on from the middle school. We wanted to put those two events together, so families only needed to come out once. We wanted to put those two events together so families only needed to come out once in the middle of the day. Preschool graduation and last day will be June 16. And we have a schoolwide move up day on June 21st. This year, the students will be able to move to the teacher that they will have next year. So they will meet their teacher heading into the summer and be able to know who they're going to have, which will hopefully help students be ready and excited to come back. That's my celebrations and events.
That's it?
I know. No, I didn't even include everything. In fact, there's some scribbles here because I was like, oh yeah, and I should talk about this. Oh yeah, like I had to stop myself. My second topic is just I provided some data on our I-ready end of year results. The thing to, I think really, we have math and reading. The thing to really pay attention to, so the duller one. Is it not in the packet?
Do you have it in the packet?
Okay. Oh, yes, yeah.
Yeah, okay. I didn't know if, I didn't put it on.
Oh, no, no. I, yeah. But I just wanted to share just our growth. We've had tremendous growth in terms of our students that are on tier one instruction. So in math, we started the year at 9% on tier one and are now ending at 51%. So that is overall is the school. So that is a lot of growth if you look at the increase in the green and the decrease in the red. I think we can say we're making a lot of really fantastic growth there. So I just wanted to share that with you overall. And then the last piece is a PBIS update. We've made a lot of growth also in our PBIS structures, really focused on our tier one structures. So we have doubled our fidelity to tier one structures that we have in place. Things like having teams, having administrators on teams, having regular meetings and structures in place to support PBIS. We do still have some growth to make in our tier two and three. So tier two would be how to support students who are struggling with meeting our school-wide expectations. What different types of things do we have in place that can help us meet those needs? So we do have work to do in our tier two and our tier three. Tier three are more intensive services for students that when they struggle to meet our expectations, school-wide expectations, how do we continue to support them? But we've made really great growth in getting it back up and running, which was a real focus for this year, for the district and for PAE specifically. So I'm looking forward to continuing working with our team to continue growing that. Questions?
Questions, yes, Ms. Mallon?
I just want to say that I went to one of the concerts and I was so, so impressed with the instruction these students are getting, the combination of music and movement by the students, very well organized, very much so. And everybody enjoyed it, including myself. It was very, very good.
Thank you. And a big shout out to Mrs. McDonald, our music teacher, who plans for that and puts that on.
Yeah, and the events, I mean, I think that was a pretty exhaustive list. Maybe there was more, but I know it's been really busy. I've had the pleasure of being at some of them and just really, I can't thank all of the team enough for all that goes on behind the scenes to get the event off the ground. And then, of course, the cleanup after everyone else is gone. So and the grads on parade, that really, that's probably one of my favorite events. And Park Ave really, really does it, you know? I could see the excitement not only on the little kids' faces, but the graduates were beaming with pride to see the little kids looking up at them. And even some of the teachers who had those students as little, little kids and seeing the growth. So really moving, so well done.
Nice. I saw teachers with tears. I saw students with tears. So it was very nice. It was a great, great day. And I just want to give a shout out to the Girls on the Run. I was able to go there Saturday morning and cheer them on. I was going to put the video on, but you can only hear me yelling, so I won't do that. So screaming, go Park Ave! So I'm like, yeah, that's not good. But it's wonderful to see our staff out there supporting our students and the efforts across the district, across the district and every building. Is just couldn't be prouder and happier for everything that's going on and thankful to everybody for their efforts. So I appreciate that.
Yeah, it's true. Thanks for bringing that up. And, you know, the coaches are great, but it wasn't even just the coaches that were there. There were lots of teachers from across the building that were there, partnered up with students and running and that kind of thing. So really great, yeah.
Through the chair, can I just add? I was at Girls on the Run as well and I was not aware that anybody could run. So I think that that message is going to be sent out to everybody. So that would, that would be great. I think, you know, I know I'm going to run next time. So I just think that that's something that I wanted to kind of throw out there because it supports the program.
And just for anybody who might be interested, it's not just running. You can walk, as I did for much of it when I participated. So.
Yes, exactly, exactly. It's open for everybody.
Yeah, that's great. All right. Well, thank you very much for your updates. Any other questions before we move on? Well, okay, hearing none. The next item on the agenda under old business is the monthly report on fundraising applications. And just as a reminder, it's the role of the school committee to review fundraising applications, but we don't approve them. Those are done at the building level. Looks like there are four going on. Did you want to talk about them, Mrs. Perangeli or?
No, I can list if you want. We have the class of 2026 who did eight bistro. And they donated proceeds, a portion of the proceeds, singing with Panera Bread.
Thank you. Let me start over. Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. The class of 2026, 88 bistros, a portion of the proceeds. The class of 2026, again, Panera Bread, who donated a portion of the proceeds. They had a class of 2025, Kiss the Fish. And then the GSA T-shirt sale. So lots of things going on there.
Great. Thank you for those updates. Any questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none. The next item on the agenda under new business is the acceptance of a donation of $350 worth of ice cream coupons to Webster Middle School students from Dairy Brothers.
Yep. They, we had a donation from Dairy Brothers. One of the staff, I believe, received a donation through Dairy Brothers in the amount of $350 worth of ice cream coupons to hand out.
Great. Questions about that? The next item is the acceptance of a donation of 350 pencils from Erin Brown. Oh, I was going to take all of them. Okay. Is that all right? Just keeping you on your toes.
Keeping each other on our toes tonight.
So the 350 pencils, any questions about that or?
Nope.
Okay. And the next item is the acceptance of miscellaneous donations to the Bartlett High School senior overnight party. There's a list in our packet. It's pretty extensive. And the acceptance of $4,452 from the Janet Malsner Humanities Trust grant. Want to say anything about that, Mrs. Perangeli or?
Well, go ahead.
Oh, sure. Yep, okay.
Different.
So, yep. So we, before we move on to that, that donation, we'll, I'll entertain a motion to accept the donation of ice cream coupons from Dairy Brothers in the amount of $350, 350 pencils from Erin Brown and the miscellaneous donations to the Bartlett High School senior overnight party.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Laurie, would you please pull the committee?
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Yes, motion passes. And thank you to all of the donors for their generosity. And then the next item is the acceptance of $4,452 from the Janet Malsner Humanities Trust Grant. Any discussion about that?
Once again, we applied for the grant at the high school and they received the Janet Malsner. They do it year after year, a very generous organization. So I'd like to thank them for awarding us the grant in the amount of $4,452.
Great. Any questions from the committee? I'll entertain a motion to accept that donation as presented.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Laurie, would you please pull the committee?
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Yes, motion passes. Thank you once again to the Janet Malsner Humanities Trust. And the next item on the agenda is policy IMG, Animals in School. It's the first reading.
Thank you. In your packet, you will have, I put a couple of things in your packet, actually. You will have the new IMG, Animals in School policy. And then I put in the old policy for your reference in your packet. Ms. Peterson is here. We are looking, this policy really expands on the use of service animals or therapy dogs or animals in our school district. As you know, we have seen an increase in social, emotional issues happening and over time since COVID and before COVID. But they've really increased and we have seen more school districts using therapy animals to help mitigate or help calm some of the students. I'm probably not using the right word. I'm having a little brain moment here. But really redirecting them and giving them a moment or a timeout to sit and really have that minute to kind of regroup and calm down. As we all know, therapy animals are used in many, many kinds of organizations around. They're used in hospitals all the time for calming students or anybody that is going through any kind of health crisis. We have information here that we'd like to share with you about it. I also have an article from, it was on Channel 5 News not too long ago, when Ms. Peterson approached me with this, because we do have a staff who is, who does have a licensed therapy animal, who was talking about this counselor with Ms. Peterson. And she brought it to my attention, thinking it would be really helpful. Channel 5 on May 31st posted a story about a school resource officer in Gloucester who won national recognition. And what he does is he has a therapy animal who comes into school with him, ACE, and they meet with groups of kids. It really helps some diffuse some behavior problems where students can escalate. And then they have a few moments to calm down. There is a lot of research. I don't know, what do you want to add to that, Ms. Peterson? I did, we did put some articles in your packet for you to read.
Yeah, so there is a lot of research. I mean, it could probably include 100 articles if you wanted them and videos, if you just go to YouTube or Google it. But this policy is different than the current policy. The current policy is strictly about animals in school, like bringing a pet for show and tell or something like that. This is a, and that hasn't been updated since, I believe, 2001 is what I saw. It might be even be earlier than that. And so this policy is specific to therapy animals, which is also different than service dogs. So a service animal, service dog, there's legal procedure around that, which is different than therapy dogs. So obviously, if someone had a service dog to like a blind person or something, that's different than a therapy dog. So this new policy would be specific to, like Ms. Perangeli said, therapy dogs, comfort dogs. They go by a couple of different names. And so it's a very specific policy, which is taken from a couple of other districts that utilize this policy and specific to training and insurance, which is through the handler, not the school. And so I don't know if you've had a chance to read through the proposed policy, but open to questions. But, you know, in terms of the vision for Webster Middle School anyway, I'm not sure about Park Ave or the high school because it would be a district policy. But the vision for the middle school would be to have, we actually have two staff members that have dogs that are licensed and they've gone through the training. But a general population welcoming kids in the morning, being in the guidance area, being in our tier two journey classroom or going out to recess. That's a place where students get very elevated when there's non-structured time. I checked with the nurse. We currently only have three students with dog-specific allergies. So we would make sure that the pet, well, it's a pet unless it's in the school, then it's a therapy animal, would not be in those closed rooms. And in terms of, I don't know if you want some data about our mental health at this point or if you want me to hold off on that until second reading or what information you want tonight. But ask me questions and I'll answer what.
Yeah.
You know, to be honest, for me, I have very few questions about this. I think it's a win all around. Animals have been shown to have a calming effect on people. And, you know, this is a really thorough policy, so.
This policy is utilized, I'm sorry to interrupt, but it is utilized through other districts. There are, it's active in other districts that are currently using it. And there are more and more school districts around really implementing these policies and using therapy animals. Thank you. Sorry about that.
Up through the chair. I think it's a great policy. I mean, I even know some of the local police departments are now having some of their officers get these therapy dogs or bring them to court, for example. My only question is, is there indemnification language it's going to be? I know they're insured, they have to have special insurance, but does the district have to be listed as another insurer on the policy? Because if, I know they're well-trained and they go through extensive training and any instance with them is almost never, never occurs. But if that one instance does happen, it's not going to stop somebody from turning to the district. So I just don't know if there's anything that needs to be put in place, saying that that handler would indemnify any sort of.
I believe it is in the policy.
I know it says they have to be insured. I just want to ensure that we're properly indemnified if we have any out-of-pocket expenses.
To be honest with you, I only have our old copy. I didn't print myself the proposed policy. Actually, I have another school districts here, which is here.
And I can check that.
Yeah, I thought it was in.
I think it's a great policy. You know, you never know, that one, that one instance could just be here and I don't want
Yep.
us going after anybody for some reason.
It's kind of like our rental policy, because when they give us the liability, they're signing off that we have no liability if they're getting her. So it would be the same thing, I would imagine. And that's something we can work through with legal, because we'll run anything before they come in with legal to make sure.
Through the chair, I do have a question. Is this, because of course, it's a great idea. I know that there, these animals are well utilized. Is it student-specific or staff-specific ever? Like, can I bring my emotional support cat?
No.
No, you cannot.
I just, I'm wondering if it's, if that's clear in this policy.
It does say that it is a trained by the handler. So your emotional support animal is not trained by the handler. Like, anybody can go get a vest for their dog or cat or horse or whatever. That is, that's not what this is. And I think it's pretty specific, but we can review that language to make sure.
It clearly states right on the first thing that therefore, unless authorized by the superintendent and except in accordance with the law with this policy, only approved animals are allowed on the school property. So there's a process that they're going to be going through. It's not like anybody can just bring in an animal. And they would have to have the liability and the training to be used. So we're talking, it's not service, we're talking therapy. So it would have to be. we're talking therapy. So it would have to be the insurance and everything that would go along with it.
Any other discussion about this? Laurie, no motion, right? Just a reading.
If, as, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, Ms. Peterson, please go ahead.
If you have questions as you're reading through the information, please feel free to reach out to Ms. Prangeli, and we can get more information prepared for next.
Thank you. I just want to take a quick minute to, to acknowledge whether it's the support animals, or pocket talk, or there was something else that you brought up. Oh, the bilingual certification. Just great examples of really meeting our students where they're at and helping them to continue on their journey of growth and development, but really acknowledging some of the unique gifts, challenges, circumstances that, that our students come to us with, and really being creative about acknowledging that and, you know, helping. So, thank you. The next item on the agenda is a review transfer signing of warrants, bills, payroll, and vouchers. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Laurie, would you please pull the committee?
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Yes, meeting adjourned. Good night, everyone.